Okay, I think it's working. All right, now, I've run up each of these pages. This is a copy of fiscal projection and fiscal plan that we developed. Now, what the plan does is track several major funds of accounting. So that way you can track revenues and expenditures, some of your major items. The first thing of interest, I want to draw your attention to page four. Now, this is a projection of the general fund. Now, for those of you who don't know, the general fund is the main accounting business to pay for general operations. And this projection has projected revenues and expenditures. You can see at the top, you can see actual 2012. If you go down, that represents actual 2012 revenues and expenditures. Now, if you go over to budget 2014, this represents the current budget year. I want to draw your attention to the ending operating balance. You'll see a negative 162, 229. This represents a projected deficit balance in the general fund at the end of the year, based on the current spending levels. Now, you may ask, how did we get here? As long as you know that each fall the council was ahead of me, they adopt the budgets. But the process doesn't end there. That budget is reviewed by the states. And when the state reviews the budget, they look at your current cash on hand, as well as your expected revenues for the ensuing year. And they look at those numbers and see, and they come up with numbers based on that, seeing what you could spend. Well, when the state developed the budget last year, they assumed the cash on hand was 2.2 million dollars higher than it actually was. And as a result, the state approved the budget about 1.5 million dollars higher. That should have been approved, that should have been approved based on the current cash on hand and expected revenues for the year. Now, if you go down, I know that the council's resume has made some cuts to date. But still, there would need to be 162, 229 cut in the general fund by the year, and actually, it wasn't running on one. But there is an option. If you go to page 15.
Page 15.
15, yes, there it is. You'll see the CAGIT fund. And if you go down to the bottom, you'll see that there is an ending fund balance, 378,000 dollars at the end of last year. And at the end of this year, based on current spending expected from the fund, it looks like there could be an ounce of 797 in that fund. And so the thing to do would be to go ahead and transfer some of the money that's been spent in the general fund to the cash fund. And I'll wait until you have how to do so.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
We're going back to page four.
Okay.
On the intergovernmental revenue.
Yeah.
You've got 507,324 dollars.
Yes.
Does that include the 376,326 dollars from Larnesburg that we did not receive this year?
No, it does not. If you go to page five, you'll see that what the government was preventing is negative. And part of it you see is riverboat revenue. And based on the discussion that the state knew, adjust that revenue down.
It says transfers in riverboat fund, 481,000 dollars.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I just learned that that's incorrect, it's meant to be adjusted.
So, the money that we used to get from Larnesburg is figured into this?
Yeah, I guess, because Lawrence McStar is at Larnesburg, he's at the casino. I apologize, that's my confusion. I called that a riverboat revenue, so, to answer your question, yeah, that is fact, and it should not be.
So really, that intergovernmental revenue is set at 507,000 dollars, to be 131,000 dollars?
That's, that's correct, yeah.
So that would then give us our ending operating balance out of general, another 376,000 dollars to the revenue?
Yeah, we would look at, you see, one thing to look at revenues today, most likely, if there's nothing to offset that 376, we would look again to the cash fund, maybe 300,000 dollar balance. And use potentially part of that to pay for the general operations. I mean, and that'd be the option. What I'll try to do is I'll try to identify revenue sources and lay it out to you to go through the steps to do this.
Well, I like your idea about the moving money from CAGIT to bounce to general. Because that's basically what we did. However, you only have additional spending authority on page 15, reductions of 344,000 dollars out of CAGIT. That number's not correct.
Oh, okay. It was the number I had, I can get that updated.
We moved a million dollars worth of funds out of general and reductions in CAGIT.
I have to go, so that, that basically would give us about, that would add another, you add millions, that negative 344,000 that you got there, would be 700,000 dollars less on the operating balance on CAGIT.
I guess I have to see where that million dollars came from before I can give you the answer. I'll follow up on that, it's a good question.
Really, we don't have any money from CAGIT to move. We've already moved everything we can move. And the revenue figures in general are 376,000 dollars. They're inflated by 376,000 dollars because of the riverboat monies in there. So, were he saying we're looking at 162,000 dollars shortfall? We're not. We're closer to 500,000 dollars shortfall. What we've been saying all along. We're not paying Darrell wire, 175,000 dollars in there, I can tell you that.
So then, kind of basically, all the numbers and all the work that's went into that handout was no good.
Yep.
So just coming from there?
It's numbers that you can get from the Otter's office. And sit down and work with Excel documents, you can get.
I guess I'll look at that million dollars and see what happens later, see if it needs to be adjusted. So one thing that we'll tend to do is try to look at, identify revenue sources to pay for certain things, and also identify other areas. One such area has to do with the county's cumulative capital development fund. A setback is that most counties' funds receive a cost of living adjustment each year. For instance, most general fund, that cost of living adjustment seemed 2.7% for 2015. Now, with the CCD fund, it used to receive that COLA adjustment up until several years ago. Now it does not. Now, the only way to get that COLA adjustment is through a county resolution. And one of the agencies we go ahead and do that resolution to get the COLA adjustment is the CCD, which would increase revenue by close to 200,000 dollars.
But Q cap revenue is restricted.
Yeah, but there's certain.
You can't make payroll with Q cap money.
Right, you can pay for computer software for Q cap development. There's also you can pay for some parks and recreation, capital high income, you can pay for Q cap development. You can also pay for police vehicles that have Q cap development.
We're having problems making payroll.
So we would identify areas where we could decrease spending in the general fund, so we could actually go ahead and use, increase money for payroll. So for instance, if you want to pay for a police vehicle, have a general fund, pay for Q cap, you can use that money to pay for payroll.
We've been doing that for at least five years.
Well, this way is it would increase the revenue by 200,000 dollars, it would increase the amount you could increase, and you can do it.
What all took to increase the Q cap is just an ordinance by permission, right?
Actually, it needs state approval, but that's a formality, and, yes. So that's another area. Another thing to look at if you want to look at trying to help the general fund sort of other balances. For instance, part of your income tax monies are used to pay for highways. But that money can actually be used to pay for general operations through approval and permission. So if you go to edit page, on page 16, you'll see that ending operating balance for 2014 was 563,000 dollars. Now, if you start looking into the future for the edit money, as you start seeing 825, 595 revenue, and roughly the same expenditures, and it's pretty much a balanced budget in the future years. So one thing to consider possibly is to go ahead and transfer that 500,000 dollar credit balance to the general fund to go ahead and use to pay for general operations. And these are things to consider, do you still have any options? Okay.
It's not an option.
It's not, it won't work.
For highway fund, the roads are bad enough now, we can't keep up.
Yeah, with the highway fund, it looks like that the budget still could be around 2 million dollars a year because the state increased your gas tax rate in the rest of the year. It looks like that the 20.
About two years, I'm sure.
It's, I guess there's no sense that it expires, I mean, it's still available in the future years. But each year, the state approves the budget, so then you may do the same thing in two years.
And then you not maybe be getting, doing elsewhere besides highway, home gas.
That's correct. And if they do, then it wouldn't adjust the total.
I could get, 13 years, it's a hundred and some thousand dollars, is that for each year extra? And then the rental promise act, whatever.
I thought it was supposed to be like a full of 300,000. What you're getting from the state actually, 430 some thousand dollars per year, started in August, 2013. And for two years, man.
It was not, it's part of the tax.
That's probably because you see that extra money because usually it was already. I think we can, I'll, we have all the CDs in the library, we can consider.
I think I have some important things. I was going to say, going forward, there's no action I recommend the council take this evening. My thought is is that I start looking at these areas, identify potential revenue sources, bring those to your attention, and determine how, if you want to use the money in different ways. And I'll go to that for the budget here. And I guess one thing also, and two is that, if you go back to the general fund, page four, you'll see that budget was approved for 2014, was 4.9 million in the general fund. But then you see revenues in 2014 in the future are around 3.7 million dollars. So the budget was adopted by, because 4.9 is not sustainable in future years. But based on that 300,000 dollars, or so that it's cut, this year, that budget of 4 million dollars would be sustainable in the near future.
Ben, would you, would you say that, Ben, what you just said, go through it again?
Yeah, I guess, when I was looking at the general fund budget, the state approved that budget of 4.9 million in the general, standing in 2014. But that was based on the premise that the cash balance is hard to lose. Now, after the council cuts it by 900,000 dollars, the budget's around 4 million in the general fund. That 4 million dollar budget would be sustainable in the future years.
Based upon the fact that we still get our 374,000 in riverboat that we don't get separately?
Yeah, but then there's also one thing too, is to look at that contingency, he has always dealt in the budget, there would be excess CAGIT monies that could replace the riverboat money with this area. And the potential also looking too, with some of these CCD items, that additional revenue, start looking at the expenditures that we pay for CCD, which would free up money for general pay for salaries and things of that nature.
Here's just a few years ago, that county council used a third dozen of the, I don't know, 18. So why are you just a couple of years ago, we're down to 4 million?
It, this has to do with something the state did a couple of years back, if you catch, now the state requires that CAGIT be allocated to separate fund. Not being, to be more transparent on how money to help the CAGIT money to be spent, but unfortunately create the issue of what you're discussing, that your budget of general fund is around, what's around 6 million dollars to around 4 million dollars. And that 2 million dollars of CAGIT revenue, or if you, 2 million dollars of expenditures and switch it over to CAGIT.
So revenues and savings is being a different line?
I guess revenues, I guess, the cash flow has been going down since 2012. So there are things to look at, yeah, the money is.
Why is the cash not moving?
Going down because the spending is, spending is more than the revenue.
Because the state's approved a higher budget because we've had cash floating. We've been burning through our cash, but there's been a replacement for it several years.
Yep.
Yep.
Got a question for Council President.
Yes.
Your CAGIT money, can you transfer that into general funds?
No.
Never? None of it?
We moved stuff from general to CAGIT.
What we do is. Backwards from mine. I can take from CAGIT, put in, mine goes in the general, but I can take it from the general into any other area. But I'm good at budgeting right now, ahead of, when I have to do it. I have to set it up at budget time. And you can't.
That's to do budget, to put this up.
I wonder why?
What you can do is you can run the expenses out of CAGIT.
Huh?
What you do is you run the expenses out of CAGIT, enough expenses out of CAGIT, so that you use up that fund instead of putting all your expenses in a general.
You have to.
It's a bookkeeping nightmare, is what the state trying to make things more, is creating for us a nightmare separating that all out, especially when you got to do it in the middle of the year like we did in April of this year, when we had separated all out with already having some funds spent out of, out of certain budgets, and trying to move expenses over into CAGIT. But it's just a bookkeeping, it's not, it can be done. And the way to pay those expenses is, and what you do is, is you, at least what I do, is lump the two funds together, is figure out how much you got to spend, try and cut down to where you get to the point where you're even, and then go back and separate it out to where you want the expenses to go.
Okay, okay.
And if you go to page three, the projection, it actually shows the combined CAGIT and general fund.
So there you have it, any balance of 509,794, the two funds.
That's correct. And the thing to look at, one thing is though, is that revenues in 2014, it could be actually around 5.37 million. Makes a little bit that less now based on the less riverboat money. And the total approved budget between the CAGIT fund and the general fund was close to 7 million.
Really, that number should be 221,668.
Yeah, because I don't think you caught the expenses that we moved in April over to CAGIT, somewhere along the line on, it would be, let me see here exactly where that is. On page four, 2014 budget, additional spending authority, a negative 916,787. A large portion of that money was moved over to the CAGIT. And that does not show up on page 15. That should spend, that should show up in additional spending authority. You have minus 344, which that should be a positive number, should be 900,000 minus the 344, you can do the math, which would lower this 797 down to 220,000 dollars.
Yep. And I'll go, I'll go through, I'll get these updated sheets. The worksheets I have do not show that one of the transfers. My worksheets just show a reduction in the contingencies on size.
Yeah, it's my suspicion that what you didn't catch was the additional that's got money in the CAGIT.
And I'll have to get the updated information. And if there was not a 100,000 additional CAGIT, that would.
The big bottom line for us is that we got to cut expenses and increase revenue.
Yes. What we'll try to do is identify areas where you can increase expenses or decrease expenditures, but it looks like there will be some other things.
One of the other things that we can do, and it's my idea as well as yours here, was to run the health, park, election. There's reassessment of budgets to a zero balance at the end of the year, putting all the funds over into the general fund. Putting enough expenses into those accounts to bring that down. It's one thing that'll help out the general budget.
That's correct. And actually, we have projections with the health, parks, and recreation fund. They are based in 2021. Hardly, 2021. We'll see, look at the, we're setting what kind of levies for 2015. If you look at the ending operating balance, it's around 12,000 dollars, so it's close to zero. It's compared to the issues, budget of the health fund, which would have to be an ounce of 72,000 dollars. And a similar effect in parks and recreation.
See, the reason we ended up with the big balances on those smaller funds is because when we thought we had 2 billion dollars more than what we had, those, there was more tax levy put into those funds. And then April, when we went to change, or when general had a problem, we didn't change those levies. It was too late to change where the levies went, so those went into there. We did shuffle some expenses from general to reassessment. We, we did everything we could do there, but we still ended up with too high of a balance in like, page 20 is the health fund, 72,000. The idea is to get down more closer to, say, 10,000 dollars left over at the end of the year in those budgets. And pretty much the same with the parks, run it down close to zero, not negative, but, and then keep the money in general, and we can build ourselves back up.
One thing with the reset, and that would be ideal, we could cut that balance, but technically the state assesses that levy. And so we need cooperation with the state to go ahead and reduce that reassessment levy. And why the effects of the general fund and all parks and recreation reassessment? Those are different funds. They all share a same general tax levy fund, how much property tax can be collected. So if you reduce money that needs to go for health or parks and recreation, that increases the amount that can go for the general fund.
And that also includes the COO bridge too, COO bridge is included with those funds too.
Correct, yeah. But that's a separate, neutral fund of permission, so we need cooperation.
And a question, for CCDF, when we raise our, raising the tax rate for CCDF, do that, how it gets a maximum levy? Or is it, is it a separation? In other words, is it ready, additional income, or is it just kind of switching money from one level to another?
Good question. There is an adjustment outside of your typical levy. And that CCD fund levy would be outside of the maximum.
So it doesn't count against the maximum levy?
That's correct.
So the question.
It would be new funds.
There wouldn't be new funds.
Have you found any money yet? With one idea is with the CCD item, I'd be about 200,000 dollars additional.
How many hours have you worked for it?
I have to go back and look.
Your charge is not a lot. Do you charge the time you leave in an apple tree here?
Um, yeah.
Yes, okay, and any advantage?
Yes.
On top of your 175,000 plus expenses?
Expenses are.
Yes.
What, I personally, I think my expenses are.
Mr. President of the county, who drew this contract up?
This was a contract that they presented to council, I mean, to Beckton. Yeah, so I'm in danger of questioning, they were the ones that did.
You're not asking every people what's in it, and so far, other than people that brought 15,000 supposedly, unless he gets close to finding more money, and then maybe we'll give him some more. But what is in the contract? It is open to the public, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'd like to see a copy.
Yeah, I don't.
Do you have professional liability for the state?
I have to go back and see what my firm has.
I think that should prove the standard to council, your professional liability.
So, sir, if you want to stop in, if you want to see the contract, you can stop in the Otter's office.
I can do it right now?
I, I guess, yeah.
I'm stopping, I'm waiting for the meeting to go on, I can watch, okay.
So this professional liability covers your mistakes.
He said it was.
Okay. Don't get it right from me, to that beer pond on.
It's a good question, I have nothing to answer.
There it is, you don't know my answer.
That's correct.
You hire out without knowing if you have or have not professional liability, and what that includes.
Uh, the fortunate that I've seen.
Got a question, yeah? Are we still in the same situation we were in six months ago? Either increased revenue coming in, or we're gonna have to cut to make it through this year, or the next, actually, make it through this year? Yeah? Or what? We've got two options there. Either an increase in revenue, right? And if you don't do that, then you, the second option is you're gonna have to cut drastically. So between the council and the commissioners, you have to make that decision. Has there been any discussion back and forth?
You mean between council and commissioners?
Right, right.
I mean, I haven't had any conversation with them. I'm not, I don't know what other people on council have done. Next week's budget hearings, so it's what we would figure out.
We're gonna have to decide something next week.
Yes.
Yeah, that's for fifteen. But at the same time, you also can discuss the balance of fourteen. Am I right?
Yeah, just like anyone, yes.
So if you don't see extra revenue coming in in fifteen, then you're between the rock and the hard spot. You've got no choice. You're gonna have to do some cutting this year.
We're gonna be real close.
Are you?
We're gonna be real close.
To get through?
Probably irresponsibly close.
To get through this year?
To get through this year.
Ooh. And that leaves you no carryover for next year at all, right?
There'll be just, there'll be just whatever, the office holders don't spend out of their budget. Some guys estimate that one, two percent.
Well, what about your payback? Where you borrowing, shifting money you got to pay back? Are you gonna be able to cover that?
We're irresponsibly close. We should be able to cover that.
This year?
This year.
Damn, you lucky.
But I'm telling you, Roy, it's tight.
Huh?
It's tight.
Yeah, yeah.
There, and let me, let me say something else here. We started this year with like seven hundred thousand dollars worth of cash too, that we're not gonna have next year.
Right.
And this is what we tried to tell everybody in April.
Well, I hate to say this, but it bounces back to what I said, in April, February, this is not a problem that came up overnight. This was accumulated over the last several years.
Well, part of that problem too is, it was a perfect storm coming down. We were overspending.
Yeah.
We get cut out of three hundred seventy-six thousand from the riverboat. We have the fiasco of not being able to move the levy around between the smaller funds and the general fund in April, which made the general fund look really bad. While we have balances of seventy-two thousand going to be in the health, we're gonna be a balance of twenty thousand in the general, which is ten times, twenty times bigger budget. These are issues we gotta deal with. And it's, it's, it's gonna be a long budget hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, what do you think, the state's gonna do with all this money they got coming in and save for money? That's going to the state of Indiana, you think they might up your revenue a little bit, or, or maybe that's the last few?
I don't think the state intends to do with the money.
Yeah, I mean, to me, they're gonna get twenty-seven hundred dollars extra out of me in two thousand fifteen for property tax. And I'm not the only person that lives in the state of Indiana. I mean, there's gonna be billions of dollars move into the state of Indiana through this tax raise. And that's not counting the raise you guys around there who owes on us too. That goes on top of my twenty-seven hundred dollars. So if you got a, a big apple up here in the state of Indiana, do you think they'll drip down more money to you?
Property tax goes to Franklin County.
Yeah, where's that coming from, Stan? Where's that twenty-seven hundred?
If it goes down my property tax, the assessed value of my land goes from sixteen hundred seventy dollars to two thousand fifty dollars.
Now, correct me on that. You're asking where in the state, if you give part of that money back to the state, that, that money stays in your county. It doesn't go to state, that stays in your county.
Well, if it stays in the county, there's twenty-seven hundred dollars extra going to you guys here in the county.
About eighty-six percent of that goes to your school.
And I've never had a kid go to Franklin County schools, or a parent here, or nobody else.
I'm just telling you where it goes.
Part, part of it.
So what do I get out of this deal here? I'm paying seventeen thousand dollars a year, and what am I gonna get out of all this? Tell me that.
The cost.
I don't get no fire protection. I got, I paid two thousand dollars in insurance for my fire protection. Police, if you call them, they say, well, come down, you'll fill out a report. Can you tell me what the hell I get out of all this tax dollars? And I'm not the only person in Franklin County, there are taxes going up either every landlord or this county, their taxes are going up. And then you're gonna impose another tax on us on top of that.
Especially without the homestead credit.
Absolutely.
Your land doesn't have it.
Yeah, and rentals, you know, business property.
Your personal property doesn't have it.
I know.
So they're gonna hit your personal property, they're gonna hit your real estate, they're gonna get your home, because whatever tax deduction you had last year, you're also gonna have this year. So that forty-five thousand dollar homestead credit is now worth less than it was last year.
So when this bucket goes empty, then who you gonna go to next? I mean, when you, when the landlords is done for, you're done for too. That's the end of you.
Our pots are empty.
That's right.
I've always disagreed with property tax. I think it's, they should have, several years ago, Farm Bureau almost had it through, and.
So if, if you can't balance your budget without raising taxes, it's a sad situation. I mean, you're gonna have to make cuts, switch people around in here. At Roots Bowl, when I worked there, I worked at least fifteen, twenty different cops. I mean, if they was slacking one area, they'd come and stick me in another area. I didn't have no damn choice. I'd done what they called me to do.
For your pension.
So if you've got four people here setting them in a can, transfer them to four people over here that's working. I mean, if they need two extra people, send two of them to some other place. You could cross-trank everybody in this building.
I have a question. The, um, what I'm hearing is that the state's imposed an automatic about five percent increase on property tax. So if that's the case, we can't, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Oh, I guess, uh, what happens is that the property tax is mostly based on property values. In county, what property value, the assessment's gonna.
I'd like to set the record straight on that. In two thousand thirteen, paid two thousand fourteen, the property assessed value in the county went up five percent. But according to the numbers from the assessor, twenty fourteen paid twenty fifteen is gonna go up less than one percent. The, uh, the NAV, net assessed value, I don't have. What I have is the gross assessed value. And the gross assessed value only went up eleven million dollars in the county on a one point four, almost a one point five billion dollar thing. So that's less than one percent. Uh, I can't imagine that the net assessed value will go up as much as that, because in that last year, the last couple of years, we've got more TIF areas. And the TIF money will be, it will, it will give us less revenue in the general.
Yeah, tough trauma.
Well, what never called it earlier, the, uh, under the homestead act, they didn't go up any. They stayed mainly.
The TIF areas, the TIF areas are where the redevelopment commissions have put in a TIF district, and the property tax is capped there, and all the tax above that goes to the TIF district, which absent that thing, your assessed value in the county would go up, and everybody's rate would go down a little bit, which would just be a little bit, it wouldn't be no great big. But over time, it would slowly work down. Those are just in those two main districts that we have in the county.
So you're saying, if the assessed, they were saying last night, if assessed valuation went up, the rates would go down. You're saying the assessed valuation's not gonna go up, so the rates aren't gonna go down. So the farmers that are getting with, getting the higher assessed value, their rates wouldn't stay hot?
Yeah, what you're gonna find is, is property owners, the bare property owners are gonna, are gonna get a whammy, because their assessed value's gonna go up based on the state formula, and there's six different things that go into that formula. One of them being the price of corn, and the other one being the production, the state figures for different soil types. But basically, property tax on farmland and bare land is gonna go up. While looking at this list of townships here, I'm looking at our, at our more, on our more populous townships, the, the net assessed, or the gross assessed valuation actually went down this year.
Should've. It could've. The chance didn't.
Wouldn't that be?
Mine went up.
Let me look, White Water Township here, yours, yours actually went down by six hundred thousand dollars. White Water Township.
What years?
From two thirteen paid two fourteen, two fourteen paid two fifteen.
But your money went up.
Hot damn, the assessed valuation went from a hundred and six million up to a hundred and twenty-eight million. That's the figures I got.
That's not the numbers that the, or the gross assessor has.
You're dealing gross valuation, right?
Yeah.
Roy's dealing net, hey? I'm giving net, that's right.
So there must be.
The net's where you're operating from. Your gross, to me, means nothing. It's your net. That's where you're drawing your dollars from.
So this COO tax would be more fair, and I don't love the damn thing, but the tax would be more fair if it was only on the residents, and not on residence, farm and personal property. Because no farmland, I mean, you put a school tax on farmland. Farmlands don't raise kids, residents do.
That, that is a social issue.
It's sure.
No, it's a government issue. It's a money issue. Anywhere they can squeeze money, they're going to. And property taxes are literally taking the equity out of farmland. A lot of farmers, that is their requirement. And property taxes are eating their equity out of it. And then they're gonna go on welfare.
Sure, it's, it's a confusing thing. Back to what you're trying to say, or started to say a while back. To get your assessed valuation on your agricultural land, most of those figures come out of the AFCC office, value proactivity. In my opinion, that was figures for years that never changed. That was clear back in sixty-four, if I'm correct on that. Corn acreage, roughly a hundred bushel an acre. That had to go up. Now, that's what the state's looked at. I don't know where it's at right at the present time, but that's why your assessed valuation on, on agricultural land has gone up to sixteen hundred dollars. It was, I'm guessing at this, I'm gonna say six, seven years ago, it was around eight hundred dollars an acre. Now it's, it's doubled. But if you go back and look at the history, I look at and say Farm Bureau protected agriculture for a number of years. Now, there's another way of looking at that. If you had agriculture on real estate value, instead of being sixteen hundred dollars an acre, you would be up to eight thousand dollars an acre assessed valuation if you went on real estate. You can't afford that. That damn well would put you out of business in a heartbeat. Yeah, yeah.
And it's dark.
So the state's always had this idea, we gotta keep the agriculture value down. Now, your hometown's not. It's the same as mine.
Yes.
So land value is different.
Basically, that's a state issue, and I think the state legislature is dealing with that. And for tonight, there's really nothing we can do about it.
You can, others can, other than talk to your state legislatures.
You know, all this public is costing us three dollars a minute for me. Tell me what the hell this is costing. Figure it out. Three nine sixty-one eighty, he paid one seventy-five, right? Right? Thank you. So he don't care if you are here tonight, do you? That's three dollars a minute. I know something here. I say close meeting, ask that number, then we get back in and out, isn't it?
This is, you can get information from here.
I bet you don't break my speed limit, so we're coming in.
I've got another question again. I guess I've been with the, the council of mine. Knowing, what we know, I mean, basically, when the process was brought to us in July, that appeared rather than the council, and we definitely moved towards increasing the KIM cap lines. At that point in time, we're basically told, it's not a tax increase. We went back and forth for a while trying to figure out exactly what it was. And it basically came down to the two semantics between, well, it's the cost of living increase, which isn't technically a tax increase, but it's still an increase. But, but by the time that was all sorted out, people have been told that it wasn't a tax increase. And so, once they found out that it's still an increase, I don't know about the rest of you, but I've had a lot of calls about people frankly just felt they were outlived and misre, that it was misrepresented to them at, at best. So, we started the process back July the eighth. By the time we had the time was, we're gonna get the paperwork rolling, so that if we wanna stay on track, we can have that in place for next year. And I understand that at the time, when it came to us, it was a decision, a four to three decision on whether or not to give in here, start down the path. What I'm curious, and the other commissioners are curious about is to find out, now that we have a better grasp of what the KIM cap development fund, a re-establishing that entails, and the way it falls out as far as farmland and residential, is it still the intent of the majority of council? Do you still want to see the commissioners keep that process going forward?
Is it okay if I ask that?
I can, if you want, I was, I'm gonna ask them.
Oh, with your opinions?
Oh, if you wanna supplement with.
I guess, like you said, it's a, it's a co-adjustment, and the rate goes down, it's re-established. Uh, one thing that is that, we could actually decrease operating altitude at that time, which would, which would offset the change in CCD rate next year.
But only for one year?
That's right.
So, I mean, we can balance it out for one year, but the following year, it would go for a back-up shift.
And it just depends on what's the property values, talking about if they go by five percent, then there'll be no rate increase, but if they maintain constant.
Yes, with that being said, I'm going to assume you guys can indicate if you've changed your mind, but Daryl, Joe and Aaron are probably still.
One of, one of the things, actually, the council actually adopted that rate later this year too, and want to maybe actually decrease the, the budget options.
Decrease what rate? Decrease what rate? The CCD rate. They adopted a budget letting you make. Um, so they are.
Council can do that?
Yes. So I guess with that being said, Dean, Jeff, or Holly, um.
Still have the remonstrance.
Have, have either, have any of you three changed your opinion on whether or not the commissioners should do the forward of this process?
No, it's already been advertised. I mean, there'll be a, I guess, a budget hearing.
That was my question, is that I think that is like, it's already been sent forward. I think it goes to the DLGF, right?
You're right, and then they will set up a hearing. Ben, is that right? Then they'll set up a. They may set up a hearing, but as a matter of fact, everything's been passed correctly. So, let's not wait to adopt. The thing to do would be to go ahead and change it to a budget adoption. What, the word to get changed now? Are you, are you saying that even if this goes through the DLGF? Okay, councils and positions, you do the back end, please, if you choose.
We gotta increase rate, we gotta increase revenues. Somewhat, I believe that there are cuts that need to be made too.
How many?
But Q cap, the two hundred thousand dollars you're getting Q cap, it's in the wrong place. We need money to pay general expenses. And I understand that you can shuffle and pay certain things out of Q cap, but we're already doing almost all of those. Anything that we can pay out of Q cap, we're doing, except for computer maintenance. That's the only thing we haven't paid out of that fund yet. We're already paying building repairs, we're buying new cars, we're doing everything out of Q cap as possible, can.
You have one option, to, to, a better opportunity, you could do that money during the day, and then once it's running, then you can do it back out using the channel. I appreciate it.
And, and what's happened the last few years, oh, what few years ago, the Q cap had. Now stepping through. Costs and other expenses, have Q cap set in front of you, or home buildings, uh, everything that could be possibly legal, that Q cap can be spent for, we spend for the same as your own. We have the tax of that, so we need to spend money to get further.
So, you see, when we get to the land, there's a lot of talk here. But what I heard from the last several meetings is basically, you're gonna be five hundred thousand dollars short in 2015. Is that about right?
Somewhere between the both of them.
So now got two hundred thousand dollars possible income, and if you play bookkeeping tricks, maybe you could use, you know, it will, it will work. That means you're, you're still three hundred thousand dollars short. Are the three hundred thousand dollars the cuts in this budget?
Yes, sir.
Have to be, who's going?
That's right.
Who's going? You, I don't know if these folks were hearing when we had, they started talking about cuts, but these are people's lives, and what you're talking about right now. And so it's easy to say, well, cut two hundred thousand dollars from the budget, but who's got everyone to cut that?
What about my life, or the other?
Well, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking, five hundred thousand dollars came up in the bill of this county. If we don't keep the doors of this county open, the state is gonna run the county for us. That's basically, if you want somebody from Indianapolis running your county, or you want these folks running there? Because I can remember when the folks from Cardinals tried to put rocks in the White River, White Water River, and they practically were riot about the fact they can't tell us what to do. Well, by God, it's lawful right now, and we better come up with a, with a solution. And part of that solution is gonna be income, and part of it's gonna be somebody's heckin' have to take it on its share. It's time to stop fiddling around, it's time to move forward and get something done.
If my budget gets low, I make cuts.
That's fine.
If I need a new tractor, and I don't have the money, I will find a new tractor.
Well, that's not how it's working.
If I got a bull that won't breed the cows, I get rid of that.
I've been over and over again, that's not how it works in county government.
Why?
Because they are responsible for providing the services, and everybody depends on it.
What sort of student do you get, by the way?
Well, you get, you get roads, you get snowplows, you get people to help.
What is this?
Well, I don't want to come to county, but if, when I call 911, I get somebody at 911. When I need the school spot, the road spot, so my kids can, uh, my manager can get school, they get the road supply.
You live on a dead acre? That's why I live in town, I'm there.
Well, that may be, and it's something you have to take out with you. The county provides us services that we use, and we use a lot of them.
Yes, yes, some do.
Living in town?
Well, of course I live in town.
That's why you get the service.
Well, then you live in town. Ah, I don't worry about that.
Oh, yeah. I don't really like Chinese food, anyway. I don't make it around, so that's, you can eat Chinese.
If you live in this county, you use services that everybody.
I favor my services I get for the county.
So what, what's gonna be your goal budget time?
Our goal in budget time?
Yeah. You mean, are you actually gonna stand your ground? I mean, I don't know if you come to all the meetings, but like, all this money on this additional that you had earlier in the meeting, did you have that money? Because what, like, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars or something? I mean, is this money that you have?
Most of that money, except for the ten thousand and the five thousand that we did approve, were from funds that have different methods of income, and they're closed funds, and the money that they have, yeah, the money that's being spent out of those funds is for that specific purpose. It still has to be appropriated through council, our responsibility there to make sure that them funds don't go down to zero, or pass it. But, um, and I'd be willing to show you if you wanna see, if you want guys specific questions.
I don't know if there'd be no way you can give like a handout or anything, but you know, you guys throw around a lot of numbers.
Yeah, it's confusing, and you're sitting out there because you don't understand what's going on.
And then you talk like you don't have any money, but yet you're still throwing around numbers, just making sure that, you know.
Yeah, but the, the additional that we did, um, that we approved, were all for funds that have money coming in, they have a positive balance, and they are for specific purposes. And some of those funds do not have a budget, a yearly budget, some of them, as the money comes in, the money's sent out. Like the sheriff's overtime fund that they get, they get a grant for. As that money comes in, we appropriate it out, and then, then they work their overtime.
Okay, and you probably won't like this, but now like a budget time, where you guys plan on doing your part, by many putting on a chopping block of your insurance, I mean, you're just considered a part-time employee. All part-time employees in the county don't get insurance, do they?
You gotta sign in, you'll find out.
I have made, for my part, I have made that motion every year that I've been at budget hearings, and I will continue to make that motion every year at budget hearings.
I mean, it should at least be discussed, I'm thinking.
I believe everything's on the table.
Yeah, it is.
And there's nothing that I am afraid to bring up.
Well, it'll bring itself up.
As far as, in my opinion, Mr. Rucker, I appreciate your work so far. The financial and fiscal plan, it's exactly what the example was that Mr. Kuhn around here was. The numbers aren't exactly right.
And I can high-high apologize for that.
We're so paid to do the figures, all numbers up.
Exactly.
It would be my, uh, motion to pay you for services, record, and terminate the contract at this point.
Okay, Aaron's made a motion to terminate the contract, that all services be paid up, and the contract with Kuhnrod be terminated. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Daryl seconds?
I'll go ahead.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. Motion, Karen.
Is he done?
Yeah.
Is he terminated?
Yeah.
So you know, I just figured out so far, from six hundred and twelve dollars, just from seven to right now, well, I can't get back to Indianapolis, so that ain't ever, almost one fifteen, so fifteen thousand.
Okay. Um, one last thing, just a reminder, budget hearings start this next Monday at nine o'clock, and we will be meeting downstairs next to the auditor's office.
Jeff, the representative of the APC, you probably know that we have a vacancy in a future. So as your representative, I'd like to ask for a little guidance on what you would like for me to. Positions like me to take in the process of replacing position, and what your process is, because I heard Steve say that there's hiring freeze. So, if you've got any direction for me, well, if you have an emergency executive session on Monday, I didn't even know, I know this kind of short notice.
You named the owner of director, correct?
Right now, Cindy is filling in, she has the authority to fill in for Larry when he's not available, and so that's what we're operating off of now. I'm not here to represent the APC, I'm not here because I represent you on the APC.
It, it would be my opinion, with the situation as it is, that we need to operate that office with two people.
I agree with Daryl.
How they title those two people and job duties, that's their issue, and between them and the commissioners, but I believe that we can get by with two positions there, and I believe that that's the direction I would like to see the APC go in.
Making that motion.
And I moved that council would give that guidance.
Yeah, you can't make that a motion, but you can make that a motion to give me that guidance.
I'll second that.
So, Daryl, your, your motion is?
My motion is to give guidance to the, to our APC representative, that we want to see only two positions in the area planning, building, inspection department.
Daryl Kramer's moved that we give our APC appointment the direction to keep those two positions in the AP, in the building department, Joe's.
Area planners, last building.
And Joe has seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Just to clarify, of course, I'm not obligated to do that, and I can't make any guarantees because I'm one of seven, and I appreciate the guidance.
Yes, Scott. Actually, first, just wanna clarify on the, the APC, that the inspector is actually hired by the commissioners, so I, I just think, we need to make sure that you understand that. Under the, under the APC, you only have two positions currently, and then you have a building inspector. They share the office and work together, but, so I think the intent of what you're doing is see if you want to run APC with one person, and you want to have a building inspector as well.
Our, my, my thoughts on this is, our only concern is that there's two positions, or there was three. That's between you and the APC to work out who, who fills them, what, what their title is, um, that's between you guys, that's not our responsibility. But when it comes to funding, with the funding situation that it is, I believe that we need to make a cut. Now is an opportunity time to make a cut, and I believe at budget time, we will probably move to only have, fund two positions there. We may have to give you a little bit more part-time for vacation funds for those two people, if that's what you ask for.
I guess I just wanna make it clear that, I mean, we, we meant to do this a couple of years ago, that the commissioners have no authority over the area planning director. That is within the scope of the area planning commissioner. We do have authority over the building inspector. So, I, I understand what you're trying to accomplish, I just wanna make sure you understand that the director issue is not a commissioner's issue, so.
You guys need to get together and work it out. It's a, it's, you know, I can't force you guys to decide what you're gonna do, but at this point in time, we don't have money for three positions there.
But I just, I just want to clarify, they do have the authority over those positions, since that's been a point in contention in the past, and you don't wanna go back there.
Well, can't you ask your county attorney?
Why, there's no question.
Yeah, the director, when I said, that's absolutely correct. Commissioners appoint the building inspector, and the APC appoints the director, and the APC director appoints the secretary, the secretary position exists, and they operate out of the same office. That's exactly.
It, it would be my hope as a person on council here, that both sides would look at the issue that we have with funding, and in the mood, mood of the people, that they don't wanna be taxed any higher than necessary, that you both put forth the effort to get this taken care of. But it's not council's position, and I believe, I'd speak for the rest of you, is that it's not our position to tell you who to put where, and who's points, and that's not our job.
No, to clarify what Scott said, you said you'd like to see two. The fact is, the area planning commission right now has the authority over two positions, one of which is vacant, so it would require cooperation, inter, interdepartmental cooperation to arrange for anything other than one person. We're ready to see, or to discuss. Are there any questions for the interdepartmental cooperation, county government, or do you share, share about resources?
Surveyor, the surveyor and the assessor. They share a part-time, pay a part-time out of each fund, and he does work for the assessor, and he does work for the surveyor.
I'm not, I'm not afraid to plow new ground, I mean, if we have to, if we have to plow new ground about sharing resources in the government center, that's probably what we're gonna have to do, be more office.
Maybe they're plowing ground, I'd like to follow up a few years.
Yeah, the other, the other issues, I have, right now, there was a, there's a vacancy in District Two in the highway department, and council had already approved filling in that vacancy that it opened up. The question I have for council is, that is, I'm district for my foreman, and he would be interested in me transferring over to that spot. I don't have a problem transferring to that spot, but then that leaves me with the problem of having to appoint a new foreman, and with elections coming up, you know, this being my last year in there as commissioner, I see no point in appointing a new foreman. I'd rather take the additional money that was available, and then the salary, and use that to hire a part-time fellow. So we still have a man who are until the end of the year, and then whoever the new commissioner is, fill the vacancy of a foreman. So, I guess what I would like to find out from council is, is there any objection to, if I transfer, you know, Monty Boy over to District Two, whether or not I can use the, uh, use the remainder of the foreman's salary for part-time?
Well, what would happen to that position next year with the new commissioner?
You could do away with it. They would.
So they'd set it.
They would. Yeah, basically, I mean, it would be budget for, the new commissioner would appoint a foreman for District, for District One.
But would that be extra money then for next year?
What's that?
Because then you'll have a commissioner appoint a foreman, then you'll have these part-time people.
No, I, no, what I said, I said, use the part-time only until the end of the year. Whoever was probably part-time, and understand that their contract will only be till the end of the year. There are people out there that would be unhappy, they have a job till the end of the year.
So you're gonna run without a foreman of District One, and go in there?
Yes.
Brian, Brian, my foreman has stepped up, and he said if he has to, he will go to both districts, or Scott can simply, uh, be have another employee that will take it temporarily as the new foreman. So Lee, he'll stay as director of the job, he can be the active foreman until the end of the year. of the year.
Explain to me the purpose of having a foreman as anyone?
It sounds like you did one.
Why couldn't you have two? I mean, I understand you have two garages, so why don't you have one for the Bertram garage, one for the Oldman garage?
Well, because we look at more, more than the garage, it's over the district, so basically, the way it's arranged right now is so each foreman can only see a certain district in the county. It just helps balance out the distribution of the resources in three districts instead of one district getting more attention, because, you know, if you have one person from one side of the county, there's going to be a tendency to, for the resources towards around area versus spread out across the county.
So, we're saying the commissioners from District One and Two could play along nicely in sandbox to share their foreman?
Well, if you look at most of it, what they have is they have a superintendent that's over. Basically, a superintendent, and you have a district foreman, and then you have, we've actually even, the way our kind of stuff right now, it makes superintendent position by the commissioner something, filling in the role. I've got a lot of questions, why we don't have a superintendent, you say, because, one, they're not, they can't afford it, and two, that's what commissioners are expected to do, is oversee that. And our, and our foreman, while they're supervising the crews, they're not just standing in the trucks, I mean, they're, they're workers along with the rest of them, so it's a manpower issue as well.
Yeah, that's well, that's well said, our foremen are not just supervisors, they do a lot of manual labor also. I mean, they do truck driving, snowdriving, they do any, they do anything that's needed on, on, in the tax.
Just a question, we're talking about sheriff's records?
No, yeah, that's interesting, and that's why my concern is, I know it's only the manpower, I don't mind moving my foreman over to the base, but I just want to make sure that, instead of just asking to free a foreman, I'm seeing you doing that, but being a champion commissioner for the end of the year. So, it seems like as long as we're not spending any more, there shouldn't be a problem using that money to fill the need till the end of the year.
I will say Brian, the boss of it, does a good job, every time I call him to an issue, he right on it. But do you need anybody else? I mean, I mean, do we have to have anybody?
Well, what I just told you most clearly was, you still need the manpower, I mean, whether, whether you want to call the foreman or another truck driver, you still need manpower, and on its own, as it is, we're down, I don't know if you probably know how many positions we've shrunk over the last four years, or three or four?
Five.
Five, that's just.
Yeah, that was because of me, mine.
Would it be CDL part-time, or?
Right.
Would it be CDL part-time, so that way they can drive?
Yes, yes, that's, that's what my intent was.
That's what they do, they speak, share, I mean, people don't see it, but that's what they do, it's wrong.
So, what's the council want to do?
I guess, Steve?
I don't have a problem.
I, yeah, I mean, I'm good with.
I moved that you, leaving District Two foreman, or District One foreman position vacant until the end of the year, and not a part-time.
With, with the assumption that he will leave, the part-time position will be terminated?
Yeah.
Okay, Aaron's moved that the District One foreman position be left vacant for the remainder of 2014, with the remainder of the salary line being able to be spent for part-time help. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Joe seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Anything else to come before council?
I want to go back to the transfers. Do approve the final transfer from county council contingency to, for the service.
I move that, that amount be changed from that final transfer to the amount need to discover that claim. So, long as it doesn't exceed $5,000.
It's $5,000, yeah, you have to advertise it.
As long as it doesn't exceed $5,000. You can, you can appropriate that money.
Well, you've got $5,000 here, so why don't you transfer it, and you can just pay out of it what the claim is and be done.
This was not passed.
He made a motion to you.
Okay. Daryl's made a motion to accept the transfer line for county general for office equipment to county contingency, the dollar amount will be, the amount of the service contract.
Amount of the claim.
Amount of the claim.
Not exceed $5,000.
Not to exceed $5,000. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Aaron seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Anything else to come before council? Floor's open for motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Just a small, just a adjourn, is there a second?
Aye.
All seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.